Thank you. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:09 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scravano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo?
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
Okay. I'd like to thank, I know Rod Waddell is here, somewhere in the back, I think, handling all of our broadcasting with Alan for Channel 20, and great improvement lately in the broadcasts, and being able to hear that for the two or three people that get to watch it on Channel 20, but we appreciate what they do. So, thank you, Rod and Alan. We'll now move on to recognizing and celebrating outstanding contributions of our students and staff. And Earl Dotson, you're up, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Board members. We are always excited when we can recognize our students, particularly those who compete at the state level competitions. First up, we have the IESA Cheer. The Eisenhower Middle School Cheer Team competed this year at the IESA State Cheerleading Competition in the Small Team Routine Division with more than thirty other teams. Congratulations to the Eisenhower Eagles, and I know they are here because I just spoke with them. Please give me, give a round of applause for the Eisenhower Eagles. Congratulations, Coach. Excuse me, I stand corrected. Please, Coach.
Eisenhower competed in the ICCA Championships as well as the IESA Championships.
Next up, we have the ICCH Cheer. Lincoln Middle School competed this year in the Illinois Cheerleading Coaches Association State Competition with hundreds of teams across the state. Lincoln Loggers competed in the Small Junior High Division. Congratulations, Lincoln Loggers. The first LEGO League State Tournament. Following Eisenhower Middle School's most successful season yet, one of the school's first LEGO League Robotics Teams qualified for the state competition. This same team won the Core Values Award, a trophy given to the team that best demonstrates first LEGO League core values, like outstanding teamwork, strong work ethic, and illustrating that what the team learns and the amount of fun they have is more important than winning. Way to go Eisenhower Eagles. Let's give them a round of applause, please. They're here. IESHS, Flynn Middle School and Thirdwood Marshall School each sent teams to compete at the IESA State Chess Tournament. At state, Marshall's 6th grade took 4th place overall, and Marshall's 8th grade took 12th place overall. Flynn's 7th grade took 16th overall. Congratulations to our chess teams, Flynn and Marshall. Just to finish up with the chess, in individual play for 6th grade, Marshall's Jaden Horn, who you just saw, just went around, was the state runner-up, and Marshall's Sayana Bilgan was the second runner-up. In individual play for 8th grade, Marshall's Ethan Vanderkolk was the state runner-up, and Marshall's Samrat Zagadi was the second runner-up. So, congratulations to those folks. IESA Wrestling. Nine wrestlers from Rockford Public Schools qualified for the IESA State Wrestling Meet. Seven students from Flynn and two from Lincoln. Flynn 8th grader Joseph Pineda won the first IESA State Wrestling Championship in Rockford Public Schools' history. All right. Yeah. Joseph was competing at 215 pounds. Flynn's Skylar James took 5th place at 275 pounds. Congratulations to these wrestlers for an awesome showing at state, and congrats again for state champion Joseph Pineda and 5th place winner Skylar James. Please join me again and congratulate them right here. And last, but certainly not least, Math Counts. Jeremy, Math Counts. The Math Counts math team from Thirdwood Marshall School won the regional competition at NIU Rockford in March, which qualified the team for the state Math Counts Competition earlier this month. Congratulations to the Marshall Math Counts team of Andrew Jace Bernardo, Jay Gupta, Xander Keller, and Ruth Matthew. Let's give it up for the Math Counts team at Thirdwood Marshall. Let's give one round of applause for all the coaches, principals, and teachers who support these kids. And one more round of applause for all the parents and family members and loved ones who support their kids. Thank you. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Thank you all for coming. We will now move on to our petitions and communications portion of our meeting when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to participate and petition their government, as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communication portion of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of thirty minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at its time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and to conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the Board. It's not appropriate to address individual Board members or individual administrators, or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. I will call two names. If you're the first person, come to the front, and then the second person can sit in the front row so that they'll be ready. We have a clock on the wall to help you with your timing. We thank you for participating and sharing your interests and cooperation with our guidelines. So, our first speaker tonight is Kate Rehack, to be followed by Nancy Godowski.
Good evening. My name is Kate Rehack. I live and teach in Sub District A. I have loved my job. First, I would like to thank each and every one of the Board members for their continued service to our students and our community. I commend you for your dedication and your civility through what I know are sometimes difficult discussions and decisions. Mostly, I thank you for the time that you give to the district. And time is what I would like to speak to you about tonight. All of you are aware that by contract, teachers work between five hours fifty-five minutes and seven hours and thirty minutes in their buildings every day. And most of you are aware that besides teaching, teachers collaborate, meet individually with students, communicate with parents, plan lessons, grade reports, and projects, meet in data teams, design field trips, attend PLCs, SLCs, meet in grade-level teams or department teams, attend IEP meetings, write IEPs, attend voluntary committee meetings, for example, building committees or safety committee. You know. You get my gist. And I know that all of you understand that all the work of a teacher cannot be done and is not done during the official school day. Besides the actual instructional time, teachers work hours and hours and hours and hours beyond their contractual day. So, I'm here to ask you to consider granting access to all our schools during the hours that Aramark workers are in the building. Though most of my peers in education across the state and across the country have access to their school buildings twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, I'm not asking the district to meet that industry standard. I'm just asking that teachers' swipe cards be activated during the hours that Aramark is scheduled in each building. Please, give teachers access to their workplaces so they can continue to give of their time to bring a quality education to all students.
Thank you, Kate. And thank you for your service to our district. Nancy Godowski to be followed by Denise Pearson.
A top administrator visited one of the high schools last week. When staff asked why the new HVACs haven't worked since they were installed four years ago, he said he was unaware of it. This has been brought up before, before this board over the last four years. These new HVACs blow in cold air on cold days at high fan speeds. Staff is unable to control temperature because thermostats are covered with metal plates. They can't control the fan speeds because HVACs are completely sealed. This has been brought to the attention of the appropriate departments, and staff was told to keep a thermometer in the classrooms to keep track of the temperature. The only heat that works in the school is in the offices, and those heating systems were installed in 1962. Students and staff are wearing winter coats, this is my daily coat, and in some cases, bring blankets to school to keep warm. Some staff have resorted to bring their own heaters. How much do taxpayers pay for this new heating system that hasn't worked from day one? Just think, the graduating class of 2018 has spent their whole entire four years of high school without heat. This has not been a good learning or appropriate environment for them. If they are cold all day, how can they focus and concentrate? Can we finally take care of this issue? Nobody should have to work and learn in this environment. There must be a warranty on this system, and it has been reported on day one four years ago. The company that installed it should be liable for this non-functioning system, as well as the manufacturer. And by the way, I wish this podium that you paid all this money for would be a little bit higher so you could put your paper on there. You might need that Veriga thing, or whatever it is that they call to raise the...
Oh, yeah. The stand-up desk thing.
Yeah. So, just, I mean...
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Nancy.
And by the way, congratulations on it, but we have special needs kids that could use that money more.
Thank you. Denise.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I will make this very brief. I have had an opportunity to visit educational committee meetings and operation committee meetings as I serve on the finance committee, just to try to get a good understanding and scope of the entire district. And while I see progress, and I can clearly see the vision for the desire and the need to improve, I also see some opportunities that I think that we could take a closer look at, starting with our budget. It's difficult to understand items that are not listed. And I think it gives the community an opportunity to criticize us when we don't have things clearly mapped out. So I'm just asking if we could take a closer look at that and also have what may seem unrealistic to some, and that is considering limiting major purchases for 2019 and get a fresh start in 2020. So again, that may seem unrealistic to some, but give it some thought or avenues or opportunities or ideas in how we can save more. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any board member comments at this time? Mr. Connor.
So, as a note, sometimes we abstain from voting, so tonight I'll abstain from the personnel because my wife is retiring. So I wanted to call her out for about 25 years.
Wow.
She was a para and a fabulous one, and really deserves a lot of credit.
There's some cleaning.
For everything she did. So I really, I think it's meaningful how much has changed in 25 years and how much you love the kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member comments?
So we received some good news last week, and it is good news. But I'm a little concerned. School finance is complicated, and when we try to simplify things, I'm concerned that we're not always completely accurate. So the headlines were about getting eight and a half million dollars in new money. But we get three categories of payments from the state. We get general state aid, which is the largest. We get a set of payments that are referred to as categorical payments, which are supposed to be made quarterly. Quarterly in places other than Illinois means every three months. And then we get another set of money called CPPRT, which stands for corporate property, personal property replacement tax. There's actually a little bit of history there. Prior, and I'm going to share the history with you. Prior to 1970, school districts and other municipalities were allowed to tax the personal property of corporations. And in 1970, Illinois adopted a new constitution that prohibited taxes on personal property, but directed the legislature to replace that with a different taxing system that would make school districts and other municipalities whole. And they did that by adopting a 2.5% additional income tax on corporations and other business entities. So while the news, the good news, has been what's going on with our general state aid, which is one pot of money, I'll share with you what's been going on with some of our other pots of money. Last year, the state only made three out of its four categorical payments. This year, they made one payment for last year late, which we're counting as this year's. We could end up with three payments. We could end up with four payments. We could end up with five payments. I mean, we live in the state of Illinois. This is part of the excitement of school budgeting. On the CPPRT, they're doing three things. First, they decided unilaterally a year ago that they had overpaid every municipality in Illinois, and they were going to start clawing back that money, which they've started to do this year. Second, during the state's budget crisis, they decided to start shifting some of the CPPRT that had previously gone to K-12 education over to community colleges, which they were not funding. That is a permanent shift. That money is not coming back. Third, the state also decided, in order to solve its budget problems, to start charging an administrative fee for the CPPRT. When you add up those three things, one of which is temporary, the clawback's temporary, the other two appear to be permanent, we receive $6 million less in CPPRT this year than we did last year. So the increase, the way the school funding formula came out, is good. It's not bad. It's good. It will be good going forward because that will create a base that we can build on, and hopefully, it will really be good news for the district in the future. But as we sit here right now, you know, it's not great news. It's not eight and a half million dollars of new money that just got dropped on us this year because what the state giveth with one hand, it taketh away with on another hand. And that currently is what's going on with us this year. If the state would start making its categorical payments on time and make all four payments, that would be wonderful. If the state would stop shifting CPPRT money away from us, that would be wonderful. And the increase in the school funding formula really will be good news for all of us. Thanks.
Any other board member comments? Okay. We'll now move on then to our consent portion of our agenda, including the following items: the meeting minutes from March 20th and March 13th of 2018, payroll accounts payable, purchase orders, construction bid request logs, contracts under 10,000, and travel. And the following bid recommendations that didn't get pulled are the certified nursing assistant one, the, and that's the only one that didn't get pulled, recurring contracts, which include recurring contract for the Discovery Center for Summer Program, the contract extension with Stuart Stotts for Dusty Rose for Arts Grant, the Arc Design Resources, a recommendation on approval of contract for Civil Engineering and Surveying Services for Washington, the RL Johnson and Association contract for modular classrooms at Hillman, the 2018 graduation ceremonies next month at Rock Valley College. The other consent items, including the IHSA membership renewal, the 2018-19 academic calendar, the resolution authorizing participation in the Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund Plus, resolution authorizing conveyance of a portion of parcel at Jefferson High School, and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration?
Nine E.
Nine E? Okay. Mr. Rollins?
Eight A.
Eight A? Anybody else? Okay. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the items, consent items not pulled. Do you have another one you want to have pulled?
Yeah, the HR.
HR report?
What number is that?
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
Oh, sorry.
All right. Okay. So I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on all the consent items except eight A and nine E.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobado?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
And I'll take a motion and a second to approve the certified nursing assistance bid.
So moved.
Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? Mr. Rollins?
Question and then a comment, I guess. So the question, and I apologize, I should have noticed this earlier and asked a question about it, but the numbers aren't really matching up for me. So if you look at the executive summary, we're awarding a contract in the amount of 2.9 million, but the fiscal impact statement says the total budget is 1.3 million. The award in the amount of 981,000 has been captured in the special education budget. I can't get any of these numbers to match up. So is this a $2.9 million contract? What's the reference to 1.3 million? What's the reference to 981,000?
Dana Yumbl, Director of Purchasing. I'll be honest, we're trying to work out a new format with some of the turnover to make sure that we're explaining these things in a way that you guys want to get the information. The top line is the first three-year commitment, so three-year contract with two one-year extensions. So that's the total commitment over the life of the contract. The budget is an annual budget figure further down, so I put in the first-year annual impact. So that is the one year for next year, whereas the total is the first three years of the contract that we are currently committed to if it is approved.
All right. Okay. All right, I understand that. And so, and the only other comment I was going to make is, you know, people sometimes ask how we spend money. This is a contract for certified nursing assistants, CNAs, for special education students that who we are responsible for. And we are, this is a $980,000 annual expenditure for us. So I'm just pointing out that that's where $980,000 of our money is going.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on that one? If not, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the certified nursing assistant bid.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobado?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now I'll take a motion and a second to approve item nine E, which is the 2018 graduation ceremony contract at Rock Valley College.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussions? Mr. Segal.
Yeah. So last year was the first year that we had the graduation on at Rock Valley College. And I had some people express some concerns ahead of time that there would be, you know, not enough parking, not enough seating, there would be logistics that wouldn't get worked out. And I got a lot of feedback after the graduation that it went much better than they had expected. I have also seen some feedback from parents and students and teachers that still see that there are areas that could be improved. I would recommend that those who have some ideas or comments, questions, concerns, get in touch with the principals at the high schools and discuss those concerns. I think this is an opportunity for discussion to really improve the quality of this end-of-the-year celebration.
Earl, can I ask the question? What time? One of the things, I mean, I liked a lot of things about the Rock Valley. The parking, I thought was great, the audio was much better. The late arrival of parents and families concerned me that, like, what do we ask of them to be there half an hour early? Do we give them recommendations on what time they should arrive? Because a lot of them were arriving well after the start time and had trouble finding a seat.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Scavano, for the question. I mean, they know the times of the graduations. I think what we need, what we'll do a better job of this year is making people aware, families aware, that the additional parking is in the back. I don't think, not many of our families knew that there was additional parking for those who came in late. And we're going to do a better job this time of working with Rock Valley and the schools in terms of using some of our folks for seating, making sure that those who arrive to the graduation have, you know, more open seating available. And so we learned from last year, and I think we'll do a better job of that this year.
Dr. Vosburgh gave me a tip last year to park off the Spring Brook side rather than coming in off of Malford or whatever.
Right. And that wasn't, that wasn't a secret just for you and Dr. Vosburgh.
Yeah.
That's right.
The bridge back in there.
That was, that's meant for everyone.
I went through the library, is what I did. I cut through the library.
Okay. Mrs. McCullough, you had a comment or a question?
I do. So I expect, and I know that people were late at the Metro Center, it's just that because of the size and the fact that they didn't have to walk along the floor, we didn't see them. So is there a way to have an area off in the back so that people don't have to walk through? If you come late, that's where you sit. Otherwise, you know, the seating would be...
It's not a bad idea.
And it has to be like church. You have to really have good ushers moving people over so that they fill all the pews. And I know, church and state, sorry, guys. But so that you fill that up and, you know, then that's not happening in the middle, which is distracting, especially if you have students, you know, being acknowledged or... But the reason I turn my light on is it says that there's this cost savings of 7250, 7,250 estimated, total 211. Is that, I didn't understand the whole thing. That's what we were saving because they were not billing us for those things?
Yeah.
And then the second part of that, I'll just give you both of them at once, is what is the cost savings from when we were at the Metro Center? Do you remember what the, because that was the year before and part of the move?
Yes. So the savings component is, you know, if we do a couple of things. So one, encouraging our high schools, for example, to have practices at the school. Some schools have done that, so we won't, we won't be charged for that. We have, you know, by moving Roosevelt there, saved us some money, having everyone consolidated in one place. And so through our negotiations, we were able to, you know, we were able to negotiate through some other things that they had put in the contract that we were able to take out. So we were able to save some money from the last time we did it, from last year. So we were able to take some of those things out. So specifically, you know, the practices, they wanted to use a ticketing system that we didn't utilize, and so there were some savings that we were able to realize.
Do we limit the number of students, family or guests?
Yes. So it's six tickets.
It is six. And we didn't limit it at the Metro Center, so that is a change.
It was unlimited, yes.
Yes. So the answer to the question, if you remember, and I don't, I remember every year it going up, though, the Metro Center two years ago versus, and I guess you get to add up both the RVC and the Coronado, because this will be the first year we're not using the Coronado for Roosevelt, correct?
Yeah. So it's about a $5,000 to $10,000 spread, so $5,000 to $10,000 savings by consolidating everyone, and that was, we were able to keep our costs flat.
How come we don't have a cleaning fee? Or it's just waived by the school?
Yes, they waive that. Hard negotiating.
Hard negotiating.
Well, and I want to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thanks. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item nine E, the 2018 graduation ceremonies at RVC.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobado?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I meant to say that I believe this recommendation to move it to Rock Valley started with the principals. They were the one who came to us and said, "Let's move it to Rock Valley because of the parking issues of downtown." So, yeah, there you go. All right. So we'll move on then to the closed session consent agenda items, including the appointment of Kimberly Ramsey as a 12-month Director of Special Education, and the appointments of the following 12-month program administrators of special education: Michael Ria, Joseph Rue, Amy Galvin, Christina Southwick, Sonia Perez, Brett Vosburgh, Ellen Masters, Kimberly Vervoren, Lisa Jackson, and Gary Culpa. The residency hearing officer report regarding a family residency dispute, the appeal of a uniform grievance decision pursuant to Board Policy 2.260, and the HR organization report and addendum. And unless otherwise modified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases, in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Student 2030 is expelled for the remainder of this school year through the second trimester of next school year. The student 4171 is expelled for the remainder of this school year and the entire 2018-19 school year. Students 4168, 4170, 4173, and 4174 are expelled for the remainder of this school year through the first semester of next school year. And the expulsion of student 4167 and student 4169 are held in abeyance contingent upon an expulsion and abeyance agreement for the remainder of this school year through the entire next school year. The 10-day suspension for student 4172 has been affirmed, and the following students are being given EIAs. Bear with me, long list 3494, 3498, 3499, 3500, 3501, student 3502, 3503, 3504, 3505, 3506, student 3507, 3508, 3509, 3510, 3511, 3512, 3513, 3514, 3515, 3516, and student 3517. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Connor, second by Mr. Segal.
Sorry.
Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration?
Eleven N.
Eleven N. 11N. Okay, any others? None. Oh, the coordinator then call the role on the items not pulled.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Her microphone is not behaving. Okay.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins? Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
And I'll take a motion in a second to approve the HR organizational report and addendum.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Second by Mr. Rollins. Any discussion? I don't think we have discussion on that. No. All right, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the 11N, which is the HR Org Chair.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Abstain.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins? Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one abstain.
Next item on our agenda is a superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett?
I'm gonna be ceding my time to the executive director of Alignment Rockford, Anisha Grumman.
Thank you for having me. I promise this will be painless.
Okay.
And short. And brief. Thank you once again, Dr. Jarrett, for allowing me to provide this update to the board members here. Appreciate it.
Can everybody hear Anisha? Okay. Okay.
Okay. I did have a presentation. Please, no yawning, Anthony. I can go on without it if it's fine.
We, okay. We have it, but Heidi will find it. I.
Is it okay if I say hi to my kids? They're watching.
Absolutely.
Hi, Howard. Hi, Harrison.
There we go. Way to go, Heidi.
Thank you. Thank you. So I always like to start out, just to set the tone of the mission and the goals for Alignment Rockford. The mission is to align community resources in support of public school strategies, to raise student achievement, improve the health and happiness of our children, and advance the economic and social well-being of our community. It's a powerful mission. Then that mission, we have four main go, goals, and that is number one, to increase kindergarten readiness, increase high school graduation rates, increase college and career readiness, and improve community prosperity. And now on to our team updates. So within Healthy Starts, both sub-teams are now in the pilot implementation phase. Starting with the playgroups, research has shown that it is critical that parents and caregivers talk, sing, and read aloud to children every day starting at birth to develop language skills. Well-developed language skills provides a strong foundation for reading success. So the focus of the parent-child playgroup is to increase and develop high-quality interactions between parent or caregivers and their children through active play. The additional benefit will include increased awareness of community services that support families and a decrease in isolation for families with young children. So this weekly playgroup piloted start in March for families with children ages birth to five at The Grove, and it will end in May. Our partners assisting with the providing, providing some of the play activities include RPS 205 Early Childhood, Discovery Center, YWCA Northwestern Illinois, the YMCA Rock River Valley, and City of Rockford Head Start. There has been a slow start in the participation from the families, which was kind of expected for this program, but we've connected now with support groups that actually support the families at The Grove. Groups like Family to Family, Rockford Housing Authority, and the Home Visitors Program. And they have connected with some of the families and based upon the feedback as to why we have low attendance, it was decided to change the meeting times from early day to early afternoon to accommodate more families. And also, there's been a discussion around changing the venue. It's currently being piloted at the police station across the street from The Grove, so now we're considering moving into the community room at The Grove. So hopefully, that will increase participation. Phase two of this pilot, based upon the feedback and the outcomes, will be piloted in the fall. The Connected Families Team has completed their environmental scan, tactical plan, and communication to the community to participate. Based upon their research, they found that parents of all backgrounds, as well as case managers, find our social systems hard to navigate and to acquire for services. So the vision for this team is for all families with children's ages zero to five to have easy access to resources they need to ensure their children are ready for and able to excel in school. This is how the Single Point of Entry card was born, and I believe you have a copy of that currently at, at your desk. It looks kind of like this. With this card, families now have a single contact for the following categories: medical care, physical or mental, food, enrichment activities, abuse and neglect, childcare ongoing and emergency, home visiting for ages zero to three years, preschool enrollment, employment, job training, developmental screening, housing, and developmental delays, as well as transportation. The Single Point of Entries for these categories were chosen based upon their knowledge, skill, and willing to connect the families with the appropriate, appropriate services, whether that service is provided by the Single Point of Entry or another agency. They were also chosen based upon the ability to have the capacity to handle an increase in contacts and the ability to track the source of contract and report back to Alignment Rockford how many families were referred by the card, and whether those families are successfully enrolled or referred. This card was distributed at the Case Managers Community of Practice Event in March, which we had over 100 participants, or approximately 100 participants. And we have certainly received great feedback from the case managers as having a better ease of being able to navigate our social systems. And so far, we have distributed over 5,000 cards across the community with, with us basically getting calls every day for more, for more copies. Phase two of this process will, will begin later on this year, where we're hoping to have a more online system for this, for this card. I just want to let you know that this activity moves us toward a more family-focused and user experience process than an institution policy procedure focus. The next slides will refer to our new college and career readiness teams. Towards the end of last year, the Academy Expo Career Awareness and College Readiness Teams were combined to focus on comprehensive college and career readiness initiatives that align to the profile of a graduate and allows volunteer resources to be better utilized at pivotal points. So the new team is called the College and Career Readiness Team, and the next few slides will highlight the progress and their focus of the sub-teams. So first off is the Capstone Team. And their objective is to engage the community to serve as consultants to students on year-long projects. They are currently in the scale-up phase for this year and will be focusing on improving support for the current Capstone courses and also researching current models across the, across the nation that include Capstone experiences for all students. The next phase will be to develop a framework that enables all seniors to have this type of Capstone experience. The other team, sub-team, is the Job Shadow and Internship Team. Their key 2018 focus includes defining what is a job shadow, what it is and what it is not. There are different interpretations of what that means. We need to define what that looks like for our, for our students and for the district. And to also to complete an environmental scan to identify the component, actually a competent model-based Capstone or job shadow activity based upon the research. So the plan is for both of these teams to launch a pilot in the fall of this year. We're actually gonna be quite busy in this college and career readiness team this year, which is a good thing. The next team is the Curriculum Design Support Team. This team is a new frontier for Alignment, which we are truly excited to be a part of. They are in the beginning stages of their tactical plan and will hopefully launch a pilot next year. The team's 2018 focus will begin with educating the teams on curriculum, curriculum design, and assessing current state of the elementary curriculum while also identifying the, how the community can support. The Academy Expo is in its institutionalization phase. Woo-hoo. This will be executed in three phases that are highlighted here on the slides. Phase one is to be executed this year and will allow two to three businesses to shadow Alignment from the VIT planning all the way through execution phase. And also, phase two, if we achieve our outcomes from phase one, will offer the businesses to then, for us to choose a business to then transfer ownership of the Academy Expo to that, to that business partner for about one year. If phase two has proven successful, we will start phase three, which will be a three-year agreement to execute the Expo with, with Alignment Oversight. I just wanted to ensure the board that Alignment will be identifying the ground rules for the Expo to ensure the integrity and intent of the Academy Expo continues to align with the district's strategies. So through all three phases, Alignment will still be a part of the process, just kind of doing more of the hands-on work.
Can we ask questions?
Sure.
What do you mean by transfer ownership? So are we, are we paying, are you talking about pay, not we, are you talking about paying somebody to run the Expo? They're taking it over and they're gonna make money on it? What's, what's the model here?
So the model is for them to execute. We will not be providing them funds for the event. So they, the fund, I should say, the funds will be coming from another entity, not Alignment Rockford. Alignment Rockford, we, we don't own programs. We get programs up to a certain stage where we can pass it off to, to the community to then start to actually execute those programs going forward. So they would have to come up with their own funding streams for the event, which is part of the reasons why the first phase this year is for them to shadow with us, to ensure that they have the capability and the means and the resources to put on an event of this size.
Okay.
Now, if they need help with, with conjuring resources, funding resources, Alignment, we could help with that through grant writing, because we also receive funds as well to help with that. But we are willing to help with that.
They is very nebulous. So are you looking at an organization, a business, a, an individual? If somebody's shadowing you, you must have an idea who's gonna be shadowing you.
So our invitation to participate has not gone out to the community yet. So we do not know who will respond to our ITP. So what we do is we, we build the framework, identifying what kind of, what type of organization we're looking for, what the project is itself, what all it takes to run an Academy Expo, and we send that out to the community. We receive responses back as to who would like to be a part of this phase one. And we hope that we'll receive more than two or three responses. And we will ensure that we have a targeted list of folks that we are trying to, to, to go after. But from that, we will scale it safe. We've received 20 responses. Alignment as a whole, from our operating board, will then choose who we feel are the best entities going forward that we feel would be able to address and be able to successfully run.
So is there a model that this is being done elsewhere?
No.
Okay. And I'd guess, I'd ask, other than some, not notoriety, but publicity, because say a health system chose to do it and has their name behind it, and then they have to have their people kind of put everything together, I understand, gradually they'll take over more. Is there anything else that they would gain from it, other than this might be their volunteerism for the district, for the community to participate or to spearhead this? I mean, it's a pretty big thing.
It is. It is.
Yeah, if I could just jump in, I, I think this is a really important point to pause, because this is, the way Alignment is designed is to go through the five-step process and to institutionalize. We just have never done that before. And this is our highest-profile, biggest event, so this is a big deal. And so I appreciate the scrutiny and the, and the questions, because this is gonna be a really big transition. And what Anisha and the team have ensured, have assured me of is that this transition would only happen if a partner was capable of doing that work. But the value of doing this kind of transition is it allows Alignment to now tackle other pilot projects and expand their bandwidth. A huge, a huge part of their annual resource allocation in terms of staff time right now goes to maintaining this event. So if we really want Alignment Rockford to expand, in addition to giving them additional dollars, the other way we can get them to expand is by institutionalizing events like this. So, you know, we're gonna be watching closely, but I don't think anyone would assume a for-profit role. It would just be someone taking on whatever revenue streams, make it cost-neutral so that they could run the event, just to be clear on that. This isn't something we're kind of putting out to bid, so to speak.
Well, and to be clear, it's not scrutiny, it's understanding.
Right.
Right.
It's really educating us. So I, I hope that it didn't come across that way. I apologize if it didn't.
I appreciate the level of interest.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate the questions. I love interaction, so I appreciate that. But just to kind of let you know, we are, the team itself is working on just kind of the value proposition for the business that will take on this initiative. We're trying to paint what that looks like now, because we understand that it could be someone from the health systems, it could be someone from another organization, corporate organization, and they have to see the value, right, the true value in taking something like this on. So our team is focusing on defining what that is.
Okay.
Next to the last side, slide, it's the focus on the Industry Councils, the Law and Public Safety and the Fire Science Council. These councils are a coordinated effort to develop and implement a workforce talent pipeline to grow local capacity for the Rockford Police Department and Rockford Fire Department through a strategic partnership with the District 205 and the team members listed on the slide. The three focus areas of these councils are number one, to increase engagement and awareness at every stage. So meaning to strategically target students in elementary, preferably at the sixth grade, middle school, at seventh and eighth grade, and high school. We also want to leverage the students currently involved in the Explorers Programs to help increase enrollment there. Number two is to mature a, some type of connect program, targeting but not limited to ages 18 through 21. So some of those ideas involve developing a cadet program for those students. Also, maybe something in the lines of ensuring some type of paid work activity after high school to maintain interest. Number three is to further develop post-secondary pathway programs with hands-on experience, which is kind of already running with the Great Lakes Grant Team. So in February, we presented to the mayor, and he was pleased with the progress so far with the teams. And our next step is to start drafting a tactical plan to determine our outputs and outcomes around these strategies. And the last slide is regarding a big thank you. So a lot of the things that I talked about wasn't done in a silo, and we had a lot of partners help us out with a lot of these activities, especially with our, with our playgroups and our Healthy Starts team. So I would like to say a big thank you to Rockford Public Schools and the Rockford Park District for allowing us to use a lot of your copy service, services for those Single Point of Entry cards. Also Barnes and Nobles, who donated over 200 books to the playgroup itself to hand out to families and their children. And then also the Rockford Housing Authority for being able to knock on doors to encourage families to come and participate. They have been really, really, really great with that. So just want to thank all of those folks for helping us through our activities this year.
Any other questions or comments for Anisha? Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
For being here, great job. Okay, we'll move on then to committee reports. Education Committee is up first.
Education Committee has not met since our previous board meeting. We will meet in this room next Tuesday at 5:30. That's April 17th, and you can look on Board Docs under Education Committee for the agenda.
Finance Committee, Mr. Rollins.
Finance Committee did meet in this room on April 2nd at 5:30 PM. We had a pretty full agenda going through more portions of the preliminary budget. The full reports are available on Board Docs. I'll try to hit the highlights. And again, the approach that the administration is taking in doing these preliminary, sorry, departmental budgets is to at least ask the departments, each department, to try to reduce their budget by 1% to try to find money for strategic initiatives. And so what we've done, what we, the presentations for most of these departments will show what they've done in their regular budget, and then will sometimes come with a series of asks that might be paid for out of the savings. So that's just kind of the background on how this is all set up. The legal department preliminary budget, not a lot to report there, pretty much just a status quo budget, but with a 1% overall decrease in the budget.
But she worked hard on it, though.
She worked hard on it.
Okay, all right.
But I'm not going to go into lengthy detail about it. The TORT Fund does show an increase. One of the reasons that was given for that increase is that the athletic trainer contract falls within that budget. And we are currently on a one, I think it's a one-year contract with OSF, and apparently OSF gave us a very good deal on that one-year contract, has let us know that it is not going to continue that very good deal. And the preliminary indications are that we're not going to get that very good deal from anybody else either. So the expectation is that the cost of the athletic trainer contract is going to go up significantly. There is some differences really based on shifting some expenditures between funds. What's also going on as we develop, or as the administration develops this budget, is they're finding that costs ought to be allocated differently, so we do see some shifting between light items. And then I just thought I'd, if I can find it briefly, summarize some of the major costs, which they summarized for us, that fall under the TORT Fund, Fund 80. The city of Rockford Police Services, that's about $1.2 million. Our private security services, that's about $1.03 million. The collective liability insurance cooperative, which is our liability insurance arrangement, that's $1.6 million, which is actually split, $1.1 million for the TORT Fund and $500,000 for the transportation fund. And those are the major expenditures, or the major items under the TORT Fund, TORT Fund 80. Next up was human resources. That, again, was a pretty much status quo budget, which led us to a discussion about the fact that we have seen turnover in our HR staffing. And Mr. Zetiker acknowledged that we do have some issues with both workload and compensation in HR. The example he gave, because we are losing people to private industry, and the example he gave is that in private industry, the standard workload is 300 employees per HR individual, and for us, it's 600 employees per HR individual. So that could be a potential point for discussion as we try to finalize the budget. The initiatives that were listed there were the RU Pathway, which falls under HR for some reason, the MLC Expiring Teacher Initiative that we've got, and then more money for recruitment. As a subset, we talked about benefits. The two largest contracts under benefits are our contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield for what I think is basically our TPA services for healthcare, that's $1.9 million. And then because we're self-insured, we have to have stop-loss insurance, or we should have stop-loss insurance. And our stop-loss insurance with Sun Life is about $1.3 million. Under talent development, the actual budget is pretty much status quo. There is a request, or at least a potential request, for a lead mentor for new teachers. We've increased, we've changed the model for the mentors for new teachers. We now have many more mentors than we used to. I think they'd like to have a coordinator for those mentors. That would be a cost of $106,400 if we went down that road. Fine Arts shows up under HR. They've got requests for, potentially for a fine arts coordinator. We're doing many, many, many more events than we used to. They all need to be coordinated. If we did another fine arts coordinator, or a fine arts coordinator, that would be Another request, potential request, is for uniforms, performance uniforms for band, choir, orchestra. Apparently, none of our secondary schools really have good uniforms, so they're looking to budget, or they're, this is all preliminary, by the way, at least that's the way it's being presented to the Finance Committee. These are kind of ideas that are out there being asked for discussion. So the budget to establish uniforms, that would then, they'd try to do like an annual refresh program on the uniforms, that's $80,000. And then there's a request for, to improve or get performance acoustic shells for $10,500. That led us to continuous improvement, which is leading the way in the budget reduction area. So they showed, between their two departments, the continuous improvement and the process improvement budget, they showed a reduction in their continuous improvement budget of 12.7%, and in their process improvement budget, a decrease of 26%. And most of those, what I'm seeing throughout these departments is where there's cost savings, reductions, it's in a reduction in purchase services, a reduction in using contractors, consultants, it's not really a reduction in FTEs. They have, in terms of their requests, their ideas, I should say, rather than requests, or their potential ideas, a dean of instructional leaders, an elementary EOPA trainer, a secondary EOPA trainer, three auditors, and a process for student record improvement. And then we ended with the Communications Department, which included security services and the Welcome Center. The Communications Department, if you look at the budget proposal, shows an increase of three FTEs, but that's really just a pass-through. For whatever reason, the tutors that are provided to us by the Literacy Council, and which the Literacy Council pays for through grants, show up in the Communications Department, and it looks like they're increasing that number of tutors from seven to 10 for next year. So on paper, it looks like we're increasing the FTEs for the Communications Department, but that's really just that pass-through from the Literacy Council. Under security services, that's a pretty flat budget. They, it looks like they decreased their budget by 9.9%. And then the Welcome Center is showing an increase in their budget, and there's an additional one FTE, that's all people. And so it looks like they're adding one FTEs with, for a budget increase of 10%. It's a small department, so you add 1%, and it has a pretty good percentage effect on the budget. So that's it in a nutshell. Like I said, you can go to Board Docs. I did sort of raise this before, I mean, we don't really have an established, a good process for feedback, for board feedback for any of this. We're going to be locking down the budget here within the next month. And so I don't know if this is, this may be the only time for us to talk about it, and maybe for the administration to give us their ideas on what they're doing. The board's been pretty vocal about wanting to focus on student achievement. I made the comment to Dr. Jarrett recently, that if you want to see an organization's priorities, you look at its budget. So I guess I'd be curious to know how we're budgeting, how we're budgeting to show that we want to increase student achievement.
So, thank you. I think that's an excellent governance question to ask, and we are going to present the, our budget recommendations, excuse me, as a whole now. We've done whole, broken it into parts, and then we'll come back together as a whole. And when we present our whole budget, we are going to give you three ways you can look at it. One is we're going to do something really different from what we've done in the past, and that's we're going to attempt to break down the location of the spending in terms of what percentage of the dollars go to overhead, the district office. My assumption is most people will assume that spend is much higher than what it actually is, but we'll also look at services that are centralized, that go to the schools. For an example, that would be transportation. Example of the first category would be me. You know, I would be an example of just overhead. And then the third, that's where everyone always starts, that's right. And then the third category are direct services to the school, a teacher, a paraprofessional that works directly with students. So we're going to talk about what buckets, all those dollars of a $400 million budget, how is that really distributed? And we've wanted to talk about that, but I think Ms. Yar, our new CFO, is going to be capable of giving us at least a strong first start on that. And what we did in our budget exercise as a faculty, and when we bring, as an executive team, excuse me, when we bring this to the board, we will let you know our new expenditures, which bucket those go in. Are those, is it overhead? Are they centralized support services, or are they direct services to schools? The second way we're going to look at our budget this year, which is something that the board has suggested and I strongly agree with, and that is we're going to tell you which of the five goals the dollars are an investment in. Is it an investment in goal one, two, three, four, or five? Finally, what we're going to do is we're going to highlight all of the 1% reductions and show you what our stop-doing list is. And we're also going to take that ask list that we've been building up over time, and we're going to show you how, what things made the cut and what things didn't make the cut, and in some cases, what kind of compromises were made. I could think of four or five things I was kind of whispering to myself along the way that I think are going to be different from what we've asked, where we may meet some of the needs that our respective cabinet members asked for, but maybe in a less expensive or a more efficient way. And so I think that's going to really, we'd love to have that conversation with you first in terms of framing the budget around those pieces. So I think we'll be having the conversation from multiple lenses, and I think that's really important as opposed to just kind of, hey, it's a balanced budget, and sharpen your pencil if it's not balanced. We're really going to try instead to really let you know how we took the parts of the budget, built a whole, and are really trying to prioritize decentralizing resources as much as possible and getting resources to the schools, hitting our strategic priorities, and what are the things that we really found collectively as an aggregate, which was goal five in our strategic plan, to find more dollars to go towards strategic priorities. So I really welcome those three categories of a conversation. I don't think tonight is the night we're prepared to have that. It's in a very preliminary state right now. Ms. Yar, could you share with us where and when we're thinking for next steps?
Yes, we do have Finance Committee meeting on Monday, April 16th, and that's when we'll have our overall budget, our first look at the overall budget put together. We will have outlined, we have, as Dr. Jarrett has said, we had met as a cabinet, have gone through those requests, and have summarized all the requests that you've seen in the individual department budgets. So we will go over those, the stop, the things that we stopped doing, the things that we want to fund, the way that we've ranked them as importance and tied those to the strategic plan and our goals. So we will take a first look at that on Monday altogether. So we will do that in the Finance Committee, and then we'll bring that forward on May 4th to the board.
There's one other thing I wanted to mention, too, that will be a discussion point, and that is, because of the nature of how state funding works in the great state of Illinois, it is now early April, and we now know nine-plus months, nine-and-a-half weeks, nine months and a couple of weeks into our fiscal year, what our general state aid dollar amount will be. We still, as Mr. Rollins so eloquently pointed out, do not know how many mandated categorical payments we're going to receive for this year, but we're going to do our best to determine, because we received money that we didn't budget for this year, we've made one purchase already of buses in this fiscal year to relieve some pressure on FY '19. Because candidly, I don't think any of us are under any, I think it would probably exceed my wildest hopes and dreams to think that by the time we present a budget to you all for FY '19, that we'll know what the state is going to allocate for FY '19. Again, we're nine months into FY '18, and we're just now finding out what the state is doing. In a gubernatorial election year, I am, I lack optimism that we're going to have closure on that issue. I'll be as diplomatic as I can be. So we do think, looking at some advanced spending on one-time expenses, this is something I just cannot emphasize enough, and sorry to filibuster tonight, but we will also be talking about, if we do make advanced FY '19 spends in FY '18, it will not be for reoccurring costs like people. And when we talk about money, that's a really important construct, that people and the cost per salary reoccur, but there are things like buses that you can buy that don't reoccur, so we'll also add that category as well.
Okay. Mr. Rollins.
That's the end of my report. Our next, I'm glad you said that because I was looking at my calendar. So our next meeting is Monday, Monday, April 16th at 5:30 PM here in this room. Thanks.
All right. Mr. Connor, Office Committee.
Operations met a week ago on April the 3rd at 6:30. We will meet again a month from then on May the 8th at 6:30 in this room. We had basically five items, three of which were recommendations, which were sent to the board tonight, were done unanimously. The two major items that we talked about that are of interest, I'm sure, number one is the facilities master plan update. Right now, we have paid 81%, or about $205 million, and we have committed about 12.9%, which is roughly another $32.5 million. So what that means effectively is, by this time next year, we will have spent almost 94% of the facilities budget. So we're really, I think, happy with both the spending plan and the timeliness. The second item, which is probably a little less happy, is the custodial update. Kudos to Mrs. Ellis in particular, and she redid the surveys, and again, you can see the nature of the questions and what was done, but what was significant were a couple of things. Number one is that now the principals represent all of the folks in the buildings minus the teachers, and the teachers have the building champions, and so the survey is filled out for each building by each group. Right now, the numbers are roughly 65% on the building champions and 75% on the principals. And I mean honestly to say that it's not a criticism, and I know that those, the coordination there is really something, would like to see that number go up, but nonetheless, those numbers are good in terms of participation. And some lessons we learned out of that are that the day crews were rated quite highly. That was universally true. In addition, there was, and I suppose that you'd think of this as a good thing, that the cafeterias were rated as the most clean. So we're at least eating, and we're at most clean, thankfully. Where there's the most disagreement between the principals and the teachers was regarding, no surprise, the classrooms, but also the bathrooms. And so I think a lot of this did come down to equipment. And one of the statements, and I don't know if this is true or not, that was said by a number of those that were in attendance, especially from earmark, is that hopefully the contract is getting close. So I don't know if that's true or not, but I'd like to think it's true. And I live in a happy place, as you well know, so I'm going to assume that that is true. The fact is that the numbers are a good baseline, and again, kudos to Mrs. Ellis and her support from the administration. We will use the rest of the time through May to get the baseline set, and I think one of the things I've asked her to do is to focus on, number one, the bottom five buildings, I believe it was five, and I won't call them out here, they are online, because what we said is that if these are our worst, we really do need to know what our plan is to make them better. So that was one, very practical outcome. And the second is that there seem to be a few differences, particularly around the classrooms and the bathrooms, between the teachers and the principals. So that would be something that we'd like to really identify kind of root causes and have a discussion between the administration and particularly the teachers on that. So those were the two items that came out of that. But again, there's a lot of discussion on the fact that we are rating the buildings one out of five, and I think there's very few categories that were four even. I think there may be a few. So the point was that that should be our standard, and that a three is not really acceptable. And I think there was a great agreement amongst the committee on that, and I think, again, to their credit, the administration took a lot of this to heart, and I would say that's where we spent the vast majority of our time. I don't know if there's any... I don't know if there's any questions.
Ms. McCullough?
There's 65% and 75%. Was that participation rate in the survey?
Yes.
So we didn't even have, okay. And then, do we have percentages or total scores then?
Yes. So that's, so for example, and I didn't bother to write down all the scores, but one that pops into my head, I think that the biggest difference, I believe, was on the bathrooms, which was rated on an average of 3.6 by the principals and 2.8 by staff, or the teachers. And, and I think there was probably about three or four of those categories, and I asked Mrs. Ellis to focus on those because clearly there's a difference in opinion. So again, she would focus on the bottom buildings, if you will, and then where there are clear disagreements in the numbers.
And was there great disparity in the numbers on different buildings? I mean, we have, what, 40-some buildings in the district that thinking that?
Yeah, we didn't spend as much of the time on building-by-building analysis because we were really very focused on the various groupings between the principals and the teachers. But we did talk about the buildings, but mostly we wanted to talk about the buildings where we felt there was an issue, meaning the bottom five. Right? So in other words, that rather than going through each building separately, we focused on the ones where we saw the most issues. And that's, and from my point of view and from the, the committee basically gave the same feedback, that that's, that's a good place to focus because we would probably do best to raise the ones that are in the worst conditions.
Except, the top buildings might give us some information on what we could be doing better in the bottom buildings.
There is no doubt, but I would say from a corrective standpoint, focusing on the ones where there are issues, both in terms of the reality of the buildings and as well as the difference in perception between the principal and what they're hearing or seeing, and between the teachers. We wanted to make sure that we reached out to the teachers and made sure that we understood what the issues were. Yep. Anything else?
Mr. Segal.
I think to address your concern about the level of clumsiness in the schools, there's a new general manager, Jeff Jacobson is his name, and he was saying for their summer cleaning, they will be taking workers from the lower-performing schools and have them clean, shadowing the custodians at the better-performing or more clean schools, and so they can kind of create the standard across all of the schools as to what the expectations are and how they're going to meet those expectations. So they do actually have a plan for that. I don't think it's going to make a huge difference for the rest of the school year, but going forward, I think it couldn't have a good impact.
Good point. Thank you.
So your next meeting is May 8th, okay, at 6:30?
Yeah, May 8th at 6:30 in this room.
Thank you. Let's move on to our action items. The action items are all linked to the curriculum resources that has gone through the Ed Committee. So the first one is the defined STEM instructional resource that was presented. Is our motion in a second to approve this item?
Can I ask, is it, would anyone have an objection to bundle all these together, minus the one for bilingual?
Okay. No objection? Okay. So let's do defined STEM core. Is that a?
I would do the literacy, the K through five literacy ones together, and then you could do the two high school ones together.
Okay. Which, so, you're going to have to tell me which ones are which.
Let's do one at a time now. I mean, is that?
Okay.
Okay. Define, so the 16A.
No, it doesn't take long.
16A is a defined STEM instructional resource. Going to have a motion by Mr. Connor, second by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion? Ms. McCullough?
Okay, so one of the things, and you were going to take out the bilingual one, somebody said anyways, but to try to have the conversation about the package, so to speak, for K through five, that's why I really wanted to look at the literacy. Ms. Detman and I had a brief exchange today of emails talking about what items students would be receiving and teachers would be receiving in classrooms in, for example, our integrated literacy with the monolingual versus the bilingual, and to understand some of the difference in costs, but also to understand some of the difference in what we're receiving. So I'm going to just share a little bit about what you sent me, if that's, and then I'm going to ask you to make a comment about the programmatic piece that you and I were going to have a conversation about later, but I think everybody could hear if you could summarize after I make this, this statement. Would that be fair?
I think that'd be fine, and I'd probably, I'll defer to Carrie Neary and Mr. Gosemento as well.
Yeah, however you'd like to do that, yeah. Thanks. So when I was looking at the list of items for the, and you know, I made the comment last time, where, you know, the cost for the bilingual, and I said, well, what are we going to get for that? And so every student gets a book, an anthology, plus an account, an online account, and every teacher gets a two-volume teacher edition, a support pack, eight literature big books, language books, cross-curricular teamwork activities, language and literacy teamwork activities, they get a fiction library. Each teacher gets one copy each of 48 titles for each grade level, at each grade level, nonfiction library. And then I think a second batch of 48 titles for each grade level of practice books. Do I have that correct? That was in the list you gave me?
Fiction and nonfiction?
Yes, fiction and nonfiction. For every grade level. And yes, that's what I said. If you compare that to the monolingual purchase, students do not receive an anthology. They don't get a hard book. What they're going to get is three years of online access. For every outcome, the teacher gets a mentor text, five copies of a literature text for small group instruction, five copies of an informational text for small group instruction. And under, that's under follet. Under Picture Perfect Science, each teacher receives a teacher lesson and activity book. Each building receives a classroom supply kit for each grade level, and each building receives a K through two-book collection and a three-through-five book collection is what, I'm just reading directly off of what you gave me. In addition to that, will be the piece that we're going to look at, and we're going to try to suspend the rules on, and that is follet piece. And those are hard copies, all those books that are listed in there. Those are not online pieces, right? And if you look through, that's the $500,000 that were, that they've outlined exactly what they're going to do trimester, each trimester. But of note is that for all the books, that follet is including, they are also including copies in Spanish for each of the books that they're, we have copies of English for. So we're going to have both English and Spanish in the follet version, plus the whole bilingual version from National Geographic. And one of the comments about the difference between the two, so much online activity, for example, for our monolingual students, was, and again, I'm sure you'll explain this better than I, but that the teachers actually have all the information, and then they can make copies and pass it out. The question I'm going to leave in the air is that I'm, my understanding is, we developed, we had our curriculum leadership teams, they developed curriculum, we went out and clearly found resources to support that. But the bilingual program, the materials for the bilingual program is a program, is what I just heard you say. And so that's the piece that I would like for you to share with the group.
Sure. So, you know, as we-
However it's appropriate.
Sure. As you know, you know, throughout our, our presentations to Ed Committee this year, we've really emphasized putting first our essential learning outcomes and the needs of our students in a particular group, content area, grade level, et cetera, and then aligning the highest quality resources with those outcomes. In some cases, like for example, with our foundational literacy program with Reading Horizons, which is a program, what we determined is that our need warranted a program that included an instructional model. And so in that case, the best approach was to go with a program. In the case of integrated literacy, the instructional shifts do not warrant a program for our general, general classroom, gen ed, monolingual classroom. The needs of language learners, which I want to make sure we're careful about separating TBE and TPI, because you mentioned the Spanish titles with follet, yes. So for our Spanish language students in our TBE programs, we will have those Spanish, authentic Spanish texts available, and that's important to note. The particular subgroup of students that we're focusing on with the bilingual resources through the National Geographic materials are specifically our ESL students. And so they speak a variety of languages, multiple languages, and they are in various levels of language, language acquisition. And so our goal was to align the resource not only to support their language acquisition, but also to support the core instruction that they're receiving in integrated literacy. And so what our National Geographic resource does is it provides not only the content, but also the key pieces of language. And so there are some cases when a program really is needed for that comprehensive support aligned with the need. So as I mentioned, we identified that need with Reading Horizons, so it's also a need with our language learners. One thing that would be important to note, you asked about, you know, kind of what are students getting truly from each of these purchases? And I think to answer that question, we may need just a brief comment on the instructional shifts that are happening, and why we didn't opt for a program in the monolingual and why we did for the bilingual. Is that really kind of the source of the question?
Well, and I think it's important for us to all understand if we're really understanding, you know, what we're doing with literacy in K through five.
Sure.
And I really think it helps me to understand, just as part of Ed Committee, why there is such disparity. Is that okay?
This will be a good example for committee of the whole.
We can, we can just have a practice running committee of the whole right here. So I think, I want to make sure before we begin, because we could talk to you for hours about instruction.
We're not going to do that.
So I want to make sure that I can clear-
He's going to push his two-bitten butt.
Yes. So I want to make sure that I'm really clear on the ask before we hand it over. So the question really is, how are the resources that we've selected for either group of students aligned with the instructional need? Is that really the core question?
I think that's-
Okay. All right. So, you know, I'll go ahead and, Carrie, I'll hand it over to you. You can speak for the monolingual piece, and then Fauzia for the bilingual.
You're on the clock now, Carrie.
Two minutes.
And I'm actually going to turn it over to our deans who are here, who really lead the teams. And so Melissa Douglas is our dean of elementary literacy, David Allen is our dean of science, and Corey Nelson is our dean of social science. So I'm going to turn it over to her.
So the question really isn't for the high schools, I'm going to say. The question is really targeted to the K through five literacy piece, right? Cool.
Hi, so good evening. I'm Melissa Douglas, dean of elementary literacy. So just to kind of piggyback off what Heidi said, so integrated literacy is really a unique curriculum that includes four sets of standards, rather than just one. For example, like with Reading Horizons, which is foundational literacy, integrated literacy includes health, science, social science, and English language arts, so ELA standards. So not just one program can support in integrated literacy. So we really need authentic texts that are aligned to our essential learning outcomes and instructional shifts such as inquiry, which I'll in a moment pass it over to these gentlemen. And with inquiry, we really need a variety of authentic texts and tasks in order to make that instructional shift from a variety of resources, which is why we're recommending the package that we are. So do you want to kind of speak to inquiry?
So inquiry is really at the core of both the next-generation science standards and the new Illinois standards for social science, or something, I think that's what they're called. But they, they both really have inquiry as their core. And because of that, and because we're combining the standards, really, we need to have resources that reflect the needs of those standards in regard to inquiry. And what inquiry really demands is that I don't just pursue that knowledge and that problem-solving in a singular way. So those students need to have the ability to engage on some hand, more hands-on activities. They need to have the ability to kind of pursue things online in some of those other ways which like defined STEM allows. They need to get authentic texts aligned, really authentic, you know, pieces of informational text to learn that content from. So there's really not, a single program is going to give them a formulaic way of gathering information and really applying and using those ELA skills, which is really what they're doing in inquiry, to learn. And so whereas a program would be very guided and very scripted, inquiry kind of demands something that by its definition can't be scripted, because we need students sort of engaging in that, that learning that way. So that's a really big piece of why you see multiple resources, and they all sort of do a different thing and fit a bigger piece there, is because to meet those inquiry demands, we need to have a way to leverage those skills students are using, learning in English language arts in a variety of ways for that, that conceptual understanding to be built.
Thank you.
And follet did a great job of the whole inquiry question piece.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Good.
So now, a logical next step would be to hear a little bit about the bilingual instructional needs.
And so let's clarify, when we're talking about bilingual, you're saying that it is for how many languages these resources?
So, well, perhaps if you could start there and start with just a brief description of the students who will be supported with these resources, and then why they need kind of that additional program beyond what we're providing for monolingual students.
I think, I think the first thing is to understand which, which one is which, because we're talking about bilingual, and bilingual is really ESL, English as a second language. It is really the language acquisition that we are talking about. The bilingual program, the TBE program, Transitional Bilingual Education, is separate from the TPI program, the Transitional Program of Instruction. That's what we are talking about, talking about ESL materials. Our teachers, they teach students from 113 different languages to learn English. They have, to learn English is not a choice. While we need the tools, the teachers got together and they analyzed the tools, and the National Geographic is a great tool to teach English as a second language. You mentioned the, the level readers. Those are important because they are level readers. They are by grade and they are by level. Our students come from, and they are newcomers, they don't know English at all, some who know a little bit. Our teachers need those tools. That's what the National Geographic program will do, to provide the tools for our ESL teachers, teach students from kindergarten to fifth grade to learn the language. And that's what it is.
Please tell me, in what languages are we purchasing these?
English. It's all English.
It's all English, so we don't have-
There's our materials in different languages. It's all English.
Perfect. Thank you.
This is to teach English. Actually, our ESL teachers, the majority of our ESL teachers are English speakers only. They don't speak another language. There is a difference between being a bilingual teacher and being an ESL teacher. Being an ESL teacher is not required to speak a second language. Being a bilingual teacher does. So it's really all in English. It's really to support the classroom teacher that has our students already and provide one more tool for our students to learn the second language, which is English for these students.
That's helpful. Thank you. Do you want to, do you want to add anything to that? No? Okay. Mr. Connor, did you have a question?
Mr. Connor, his lie down.
I, I'd like to add one more thing. We have to, to be in compliance with the state requirements for English language proficiency. Section 1111B1F requires that each state plan shall demonstrate that the state has adopted English language proficiency standards that, one, are derived from the four recognized domains of speaking, listening, reading, and writing. And I spoke about that last time. Two, address the different proficiency levels of English learners, and three, aligned with the challenging state academic standards. So National Geographic has covered the Common Core standards and the NGSS standards, and that's what I also explained last time. So this is the ASA, Each Student Succeeds Act.
So these, those items that are for ESLs, what I heard you say, this is not for the bilingual program, this is for ESLs?
That is correct. Yes, this is ESL only, English only.
Mr. Connor, did you have a question or comment?
Well, I'm going to have the same comment, question that I did last time for each one. This is not for you all, so go ahead, sit down. So I might just, if we're going to go through each of these individually, yay. So I might just, if we're going to go through each of these individually, yay, then...
I may convince everybody to go back to us doing it as a group.
I was just going to say, this seemed to me to be everything, but hey, I could be wrong. But I have the same comment as I had last time. So here is my challenge to the curriculum heads, which is, and I believe 1.8 million was the number, and we're spending 1.5, and that's the exact number on textbooks and those kinds of things. I would consider it a profound failure if in three years, we're still spending 1.5, even though we're hitting our budget number, if we're not doing the, all the electronic things that we need to do for our kids. So what I would say, my challenge is, because I don't pretend to be smart enough to hardly understand most of that, let alone second guess it. So I'm going to let all the curriculum development between you and the teachers, and I'll be interested to see how that turns out. But assuming all that works out, I worry about the delivery. So what I'm going to challenge you to say is this, so this year, I would consider short-term in the sense that we already know what we want to buy.
You want a minute? Let me jump to Mr. Rollins.
I have what I hope is a softball question, so we'll see. So, I mean, this is actually, I think, $3 million for all of these items, so that's a lot of money, which is why you're getting a lot of questions. And, you know, in the, in the past, I think the district had a reputation for just spending lots of money on things like this, and dumping it on the teachers. And so my really, my question really is, we can spend this money, whether, and these may be the right programs and the right resources, but how effective they are depends on whether or not the teachers are trained properly to use them, whether you get teacher buy-ins. So what's the process for that? I assume this is going to go into effect next year. Oh, somebody's prepared to answer that question.
Carrie. Yeah, I think this was covered in a committee discussion, too.
Yes, but I'm happy to reiterate, the, our plan for professional learning for our teachers is really multifaceted. First is, of course, our summer professional development offerings. We are currently working on that now in conjunction with our professional development department. We're going to offer multiple opportunities that include curriculum overview, and how to really lesson plan for the new curriculum, as well as how to then incorporate the new resources. So that's one. And then in our elementary schools, part of our plan also includes our instructional coaches that we already have in place to really help our deployment and our support throughout the year. And then in our secondary schools, we're currently working on a deployment plan with our building principals, and with some staffing structures, and how we can really support implementation there as well.
Okay, so the first piece of that, I'll tell you what I was thinking in my mind, was everything you were saying was voluntary, voluntary, voluntary. So what kind of percentage participation do you usually get with those, the summer PD programs?
Varies. I don't, I mean, I don't have exact numbers. I don't know if we have anything from the past.
Over the summer, when we offered Reading Horizons, for example, that's our most recent example, our, our final number of participants, including principals, assistant principals, school psychologists, special ed resource teachers, gen red teachers, and instructional coaches, was 86% when all was said and done.
Okay.
But there, I don't know that we'll, I don't know that we'll be there this year. We have not always hit numbers that high in the past for, you know, optional or voluntary summer professional development. To us, the key really is providing those job embedded opportunities. Part of that comes with our change in the academic calendar, and being able to ensure time on school improvement and institute days, to have a consistent deployment of a message apart, across a particular grade level or content area. And as Carrie was alluding to, we're working on that deployment mechanism, not just through the instructional coaches in elementary, but course specific in high school and middle school as well. I, I don't think that we're there right now where we could say, here's our three-year plan, and we're going to make sure that 100% of teachers are absolutely in place for the exact amount of training that they need to be successful. Part of that is going to be driven by just kind of your innate professional desire to be ahead of the curve, and we're going to have a good portion of teachers who attend professional development based on that alone. Other teachers may realize they need support after that first exposure on institute day, and so we'll make sure that we have opportunities embedded throughout the year to listen to that feedback, and align our support and our resources with the need.
Okay. All right, Mr. Connor, are you ready?
Sorry about that.
All right.
Sorry, he's back.
Yes, I'm back, after water.
He wants to make sure that you can, they can get their resources on their phone.
Yes.
That's what he wants.
Well, and so if I may, you gave us homework last time, which was in two weeks' time, you were going to ask us about how chatbots, artificial intelligence, and machine learning were integrated into educational technology, so I did a little bit of research, and here's what I can tell you.
Okay.
While we don't report these things specifically as AI, chatbots, and machine learning, many of the resources that we've adopted over the last few years embed this technology, and here's what it looks like for kids. What it looks like for kids is, for example, when they're on Edgenuity, and it integrates their MAP score, machine learning really is that personalization of a student's pathway, so that when I answer a question right or wrong, the system adjusts around me, and that's an example of machine learning. We don't specifically have a tool that really utilizes chatbots, but they do exist. We've vetted a few as supplemental resources for core math curriculum, where, for example, a student will be in real-time solving a problem, like with a stylus on an iPad, and they may go wrong. And what the chatbot feature behind the screen is able to kind of touch base with them in real-time and get them back on track, and anticipates really the mistakes that students make, and then offers support in real-time. So while we don't talk about them in three different ways, they are becoming more and more embedded in ed tech as we know it. Mostly, it's through the construct of personalized learning.
And so, the question obviously I'm going to have, is if we're talking in a year, how would we get closer to engaging exactly like that, the, you know, the more personalized...
I very much look forward to filling my Executive Director of Technology position, so that we have a place, so that we have a place for this vision to truly live and make a meaningful connection with curriculum. We want to make sure not only that when we are adopting resources, because that's one step, when we're adopting resources, we also then have a longer range plan for how we're going to connect, not just the professional development around the instructional shift, but also the resource. And then how technology doesn't just exist in a classroom, but changes the way that our students experience their learning. And with that gap currently in our org chart, it's difficult to find a place for that to really grow legs and get the attention that it deserves. So we'll be looking forward to that over the next 12 months, not only filling that, but also executing that plan.
Well, I commend you on that, but what I'll say is, a year from now, I will want to see more how that links, because I think there is no doubt that the way kids learn is really different.
It is.
And, and the challenge I've got is if we spend this same exact amount every year, we'll be no further along.
So you gave me two weeks' worth of homework, and I, and I hope I delivered.
You did. And you did an excellent job, so thank you, dear deans.
Now you gave me 12 months of homework, and so a year from now, we'll be back, and we'll be talking about our technology plan.
So I would say, you know, with all due respect, maybe six minutes. So, what I'll say is...
This guy's moving deadlines, I'm not ready.
I know, you're changing the target here.
I know. But I, but you see, the point though is, this all takes a lot of preparation. And in fact, what I suspect is you need more than the 1.8 you've got set aside for this.
Well, and that's what I was just going to comment, is, you know, maybe we will always need 1.5, or maybe we always need 1.8. It's how we allocate that money. And, you know, as a teacher, I never really had more than a pull-down screen and an Elmo. And that technology could have been useful or not useful in my classroom, it all depended on how I centered the use of that technology on student learning. And whether it's an iPad, a Chromebook, an Elmo, or a chalkboard, it's really about how the learning outcomes are driving how I use my tools in my classroom. And, and that's where the, this work in curriculum as our anchor is really so powerful, because if I don't understand the learning targets, I can't use any of the tools available to me to really leverage that learning.
I would agree with that, absolutely.
That's a great point.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. But I'm really going to be dogged to stick to the notion of how would we get closer? Because I think that's, you know, I think what I hear is well thought out, I actually don't, you know, disagree that the curriculum has really gotten aligned. I think the part that I see is curriculum into classroom, because if you listen to Mr. Rollins' content...
And we see that very same gap, and that very same hole.
So, but my sense is that we can't wait for like five years, I can use that example, to kind of figure it out. So, I mean, you can just assume that on every item, and year after year, I will ask this same question, how do we get closer to that? Because I have a feeling it's, my gut check is, we're going to have to really invest.
Yeah, noted, and I look forward to the conversation.
All right, so do I.
I just want to add one thing, and that's to, to piggyback on what Mrs. McCullough raised last time, is that, that as you move forward in curriculum resource needs, that on a cost benefit analysis ought to be part of the discussion of, here's the objectives, we got that this time, or whatever, but, you know, each of the options ought to have a cost benefit looked at, to see if we spend this much, this is the benefit we're going to get out of it, or whatever, so that you can compare, you know, different options, I guess, to what they cost, you know? So, I'll just throw that in there. I'm going to ask that we amend the motion on the floor. Do you have another question? All right, go ahead.
It's not a question, it is a comment, though, and it's piggybacking on Mr. Rollins' concern about educating, or preparing the teachers, training. And the 86% that we had for Reading Horizons was paid professional development. And as of our new contract, our summer professional development will no longer be compensated because we captured the additional days during the school year for that professional development. The problem is, is if, as you said, staff who want to be prepared before they step in the door, need to have an opportunity to have that information ahead of time. So we are providing that, we are giving the opportunity, but the percentages of, of the staff who step up and are available, or whatever, based on what days it's offered, is, is going to make a difference on that percentage. And so I think your comment about the fact that everything is not laid out over the three-year period in training, it's so important what that professional development cycle's going to look like, so people can prepare them, and, and their schedules, and be available, and do everything they can to start the year as in place.
I see Dr. Jarrett's light on, so...
We will also be building, there, there is a third option, but, and that's going to be building with our professional development department and various content experts, some of whom may be actual teachers who are doing the work in the classroom. We may build, design and build, excuse me, graduate credit. And I think that will be powerful, because there will be deep exposure opportunities during the summer, followed by an opportunity to get coaching and to develop work product that is based on work with actual students and teams of teachers during the school year. I know that's very much our curriculum department's vision for what that would look like. So part of graduate credit can actually be improving your craft as a teacher with your students, and getting the, the skills you need to take that to the next level. So I, I think that option, over time, it'll be hard to have that to the level we'd like in one summer, but I think that will be another part of the, the three-to-five-year expansion of what this looks like, how we use institute days and SIP days. We will always have a need for voluntary exposure, professional development opportunities, to, for people to get a sneak, a high-level, quick overview, so they can work on their own during the summer. I think there will always be demand for that in different modalities. But this, but the idea of graduate courses, I think, will become, that are created by the district and by district experts, some of whom are actually REA members, I think will be a big step forward for us as well.
So you want a motion to move to amend the previous motion to vote on all the...
Right, yes, I do. Yep.
And so...
Item 16A through 16E.
So I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on that amended motion? Now we'll take a roll.
Actually, yeah. We were just discussing how to ask a particular question, and I think we honed it down to just the right way. Let's just say you were given $3 million, and you could spend on curriculum as a way to close the achievement gap. Is this the best spend of that money?
That's a Mr. Escobedo question.
That is a large question.
How do you, how do you know it's the right tool?
So how do you know it's the right tool? I think we've, we've tackled this question, or varieties of this question at Ed Committee. And I think I'll hearken back a little bit to our technology conversation as well. Also, is anyone else as excited as I am that we're spending this much time talking about instructional...
I know, I agree, this is what we're supposed to be doing.
That's good stuff. No, probably not, probably not. I know, I know, my ears are going to turn red in just a minute. So I'll hearken back a little bit to our conversation about technology. So the question here is that we are asking, you know, is, is this the money that we want to spend to close the achievement gap? Okay? What I would say is, the tool is one piece of a very complex equation when it comes to looking at a solution for closing the achievement gap. A tool is one piece that a teacher uses. Equally important, more important, is an instructor's high-quality instruction every day, meeting the needs of all the learners in his or her classroom, which, in a lot of our classrooms, are various and incredibly complex. Equally important is a, and every adult's relationship with every student in every school, providing a high-quality, engaging, and supportive environment. Equally important is the way that we assess and report on student progress. All of these things are part of our current conversation in the five-year plan for curriculum alignment. Simply having an aligned curriculum that is very neat and tidy and sequenced in a logical fashion, horizontally, vertically, and diagonally, to push students toward rigorous courses, is one part of the conversation. It's really the first part. It's what clarifies one of our most important questions, is what should students know and be able to do? That's our first question that we ask any PLC or professional learning community in every school to answer. If we don't have an answer there, then we have a hard time determining our next step, which is, how do we know if they've learned it? And that's part of our assessment. Beyond that, what are we going to do if they haven't? And that's our entire intervention system. So will a $3 million, or a $1.5 million, or an $85.67 purchase guarantee to close the achievement gap? No. And if anyone were to say, this program, just by purchasing it, is going to close an achievement gap, that would be inaccurate. And we should ask some hard questions about that. I would say, what we've done as a team and as a department, is to first put the essential learning outcomes in place, and then build our needs for instructional shifts, and our needs for resources around them. And it's that entire approach paired with implementing and deploying these with fidelity in all of our classrooms, that will move us toward narrowing that gap.
I certainly appreciate that answer, and it, understand it makes total sense. But the question is, that I just asked, is probably going to come up repeatedly, in, in hopes that maybe curriculum, you know, just a small part of it, gets built with this value proposition in mind. But also so that we can convey to the people who actually pay for a product, which is our students, that we can say, yeah, this is how the dollars are being spent on curriculum, and it does represent the very best value we could have gotten. And I realize, this is just one tiny slice, but if we do say, go back to that $3 million number, that gets to be pretty close to 1% of our budget. And for, you know, operationally, anyway. So if we can say, yeah, we took this, this $3 million, we did this one slice, and this 1% did this, then I think the people who are paying for the schools... 1% did this, then I think the people who are paying for the schools will have a greater appreciation for, for what is happening. So my intent in asking the question, I'm not sure about these guys who helped me ask it, was really to help define the, the value for the larger community. It looks like Mr. Rollins wants to add.
You want to add something to that, Mr. Rollins?
Sure. And I apologize, I know we're going late tonight, but these are, these are the questions, these are the discussions that I wish we'd have more of, so I am going to add to it. So one of the things that I actually do when I'm talking to businesses is convince them that business is not just like education, or education is not like business, that there are differences. But one of the things that I also try to do is bring back concepts from business that I do think have applicability. And one of those is return on investment. And about three years ago, the administration started using the phrase academic return on investment, and you stopped. And I'm trying single-handedly to try to start using that phrase again. And the, and the reason is, and this is where I think it's a really good analogy. So if you're talking to a businessperson who has $500,000 to spend, they may have an opportunity out there that they've identified that'll give them a 9% return on their investment. That sounds really good. They may also be able to identify an opportunity that will give them a 20% return on their investment. Where are they going to spend their money? They're going to spend their money on the opportunity that gives them the 20% return on their investment, because that is a better return on investment. That's the conceptual framework that honestly, me personally, I find lacking here, is that everything that's brought to us is, this is a good idea. That, we need to dig a little deeper than that. It's not, the question is not whether it's a good idea. The question is, we have a limited amount of money, we all know that we need to be doing better, we need to, you know, produce better results. So with that limited amount of money that we've got, whatever that number is, 400 million, 450, depending on how you slice it, is, are these ideas the best ideas that we can come up with that will give us the largest, the best return, academic return on investment, produce the best results on student achievement? And I hope we kind of shift our dialogue, and I hope we shift our dialogue in discussing next year's budget, which is, I'm pulling all this back to the budget, to that conversation. Have we identified, are we sure, are we all sure that this represents the best spending of our money to produce the highest return that we think we can, that we can on student achievement? And that's the dialogue that I hope we start having.
I, I agree. In our, in our Ed Services team meeting, that's very much becoming our conversation. As a team, what are the data points that we're using to provide rationales for the decisions that we're making on personnel, on resources, on our own time and energy? Because that has a value as well. And can we ensure that we are always pointed in the direction of best outcomes for students? So we are developing and maturing in our understanding of academic return on investment. And I look forward to more and more of these conversations where we can learn from you as well, in the experience outside of education, to really get that to a systemic approach to how we make decisions. We very much see the value in that. And, and while it's not as mature and sophisticated as it needs to be yet, there's the power of yet, right, with the growth mindset, yet, that really was our impetus for getting ourselves off this structure of just a six-year cycle for purchasing textbooks. That's really what we used to do prior to three years ago. And it was that initial recognition that that's just spending money every six years because it's your turn. But what was the need, the underlying academic need for a change? And so I think that's our first iteration, is really redesigning this process. From here, now it's, it's time to grow and mature. And as we build our scorecard, which will help us identify those priorities, we'll have clearer and clearer metrics, not just for our resources, but for our organization of, of time and staffing as well. So I appreciate the conversation, and thank you for devoting the time to it.
I did send everybody some light reading. There's a, there's a chapter of a book from entitled Academic Return on Investment. Nate Levinson, who is one of our key partners with District Management Group, actually wrote a book about the concept of academic return on investment. This chapter highlights that. So look forward to the, the leadership team. I sent it to Don and Paul as well, and we can certainly start to engage in that conversation. It's a very important concept.
Mr. Escobedo?
Well, I haven't said anything, and since we're not going anywhere, might as well make a comment. So we've discussed this quite in length. I mean, we had a committee, we had a last board meeting, and we're discussing again. So I won't ask any questions. I think I've asked all my questions, but I'll just throw my comments out there for the sake of, I guess, discussion. But, you know, Mr. Rollins made his point. And where I see a, when we talk about closing the, the achievement gap, is a, where I see a, an opportunity for improvement is a sense of urgency. I keep saying as well the same thing, is that it's a sense of urgency, that we need to start driving with a sense of urgency. So taking in context, what we're hopefully approving here is, you know, you've got a package, a solution that has been targeted for different needs, that looks like it's been well-planned out, at least from what I can see. But to me is, you know, as this gets implemented, is driving with a sense of urgency, and how are you going to be measuring, checking, it's the, the continuous improvement model from day one, right? So that we're not waiting three years from now and find out that, oops, we spent all that money, but now let's, but now we have a new plan. So that we, as soon as the, the tools get in place, that we have that continuous improvement, measuring, checking, and acting on them, and not waiting three years. So it's just a comment. I think I've made these comments before, but it's no need to keep the discussion any longer. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion, I believe, on the floor to, from Mrs. McCullough, on amending the original motion to include the approval of action items 16A through 16E. Is there a second for that motion? You did, oh, we did? All right, any other discussion then? If not, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the amended motion.
No, on the amend, amendment first. Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
So now we get a roll call on the, on the motion.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
The motion passes as amended unanimously.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we're now on to other and new business. And administration has asked for us to suspend the rules on their request for the folate text for integrity literacy. So I guess I will first ask for a motion to suspend the rules.
Some moves.
Move by Mr. Connor.
Second.
And we have a rule now that...
What's that?
Says we can talk about this.
Yes, Mrs. McCullough.
I, I just want the board to understand that we requested Ed Services to bring this back once they had the actual items in place, and that's why it's under new business and needs a suspension. Otherwise, it really was part of the whole package that we just voted on. So they've done what we've asked, and I just really would like to support that suspension.
And there's a timing issue, correct?
There is a timing issue so that we get everything and we're able to...
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the motion.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one absent from the vote.
Now, was that the motion to suspend the rules? All right, okay. Now I need a motion to approve the folate text for integrated literacy.
Some moves.
Move by Mr. Connor.
Second.
By Mr. Siegel. Any questions or discussions, comments? Not, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on that motion.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon? The motion passes with six yeses, one absent from the vote.
All right, Mr. Baling. Finally. Okay, thank you for hanging around.
Thanks.
The comment agreement, and I love it, for the Constance Lane Elementary School.
Yes, it is.
How exciting is that?
So in, in your package, it is a second agreement with Commonwealth Edison for Constance Lane School. The first one was the relocation of some power poles along mostly Caitlin and the corner of Caitlin and Third, so we could actually start building the building. This is for the electrical service to this school in the amount of $24,722.91. There is an ongoing charge of $56.60 a month for the transformer rental in perpetuity. And then also, there'll be a third agreement coming presumably when we vacate the union right away, to remove those power poles, to facilitate construction of the FOD fields.
Mr. Connor, you have a question?
Nope. I just want to let you know that this was discussed by operations and sent on for recommendation.
And I think someone else said, made the comment that we really don't have an option here. This is, this is, this is who provides electricity.
This is a classic contract of adhesion, yes.
Okay, so unless we have some solar panels I don't know about somewhere, whatever. So this will be presented at our April 24 meeting for a vote.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just want to remind the board that at our next board meeting, we'll, we will be doing board officer elections. It's that time of year again. So, yeah. So if you have a desire for a board officer position, please let me know, and we'll have our elections. Any other business for tonight? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
Some moves.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, maybe.
We are adjourned at 9:18, I believe.
Thank you.